This is the city council meeting for West Jordan for Wednesday, December 4th, 2024. Our first item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by former council member Rob Bennett. Come on up, Rob.
Will the audience please rise? Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Our next item on the agenda, we have a special recognition badge pinning. There's a few boys in blue and women, men and women in blue. I don't, gosh, man, I stepped in that one. There's quite a few in dark blue out here, and we're turning the time to Chief Wallentine to conduct the stabbing of officers. Wait, no, that's not it.
Good evening. Thank you, council members, for affording us some time to recognize the newest public servants here in the city of West Jordan. We have six officers this evening who will be pinned, and as I'm speaking, I'll invite them all appear to my left, if you would, the officers and the persons who will be pinning them. We have Officer Chris Chavez, who will be pinned by his uncle, Sergeant, Western Police Department Sergeant Nelson Vargas, Officer Colton Gordon, who will be pinned by his wife, Bryn, Officer Jonathan Guerra, who has afforded me the honor and opportunity to pin his badge on, Brady Peters, who will be pinned by Jed Peters, and that's his father, and Tyler Sewer, who will be pinned by his wife Christina, and Griffin Wayward, who will be pinned by his wife Madeline. And I've given the spouses instructions. They understand that if their spouses are, you know, good, behaving well, that they should put the pin downward. And if not, we'll do it the Israeli way. With that, we'll go ahead and pin them, and after that, if the council would like, give the council an opportunity to take pictures with them. And family members, you are welcome to take pictures. Now, we're going to do this all at once, so all of you line up here, and you're welcome to take pictures.
Feel free to take pictures. Take pictures while they're pinning, take pictures before, during, after, then we'll have them come up here to the dais, and you can take pictures there. You're welcome to have your badge pinner come up and stand by you for the pictures. The choices are limitless.
I'm going to take just a moment of personal privilege here, council, and tell you, I've just returned from an extended trip in the Middle East, and one of the things I had an opportunity to do there is interact with some police officials in other countries in the Middle East. And I'm always reminded, there's only one thing worse than living in the United States, and that's living anywhere else. And there is only one thing worse with respect to police, and that's having police officers in any other country. These officers have all taken an oath to defend and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Utah, and the laws of the State of Utah and ordinances of the city of West Jordan, and I am proud of them and confident that they will execute those duties with great faith and great vigor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have you guys come on up to the front here. I think there's few enough that we can step down. And invite Chief, you can be in this picture too, of course. Come on up, this is front and center, right here. Family members, you're able to come up and take pictures if you'd like, get a good shot. You may. Yeah, we're not done with you yet. Go ahead.
Illustrative of my comment about the integrity of the Western police officers, you may be aware that in the recent past, we've had two illegal dumpings that occurred at the Russian Orthodox Church here in West Jordan. Now, in some police departments, that might be regarded as a property crime. It certainly was regarded as a property crime here. What was significant about this case is there was virtually no evidence. The license plate wasn't captured, the surveillance video was grainy. I approached Detective Steve Bills and said, look, this is, a number of the people in this church are immigrants from other countries, many of whom come from former republics, as it were, behind the Iron Curtain. And here, the police are often feared. Now, I had previously visited this church on a number of occasions and spoken with people, so they understood they were very welcome in the community here in West Jordan. They did reach out to the police department, and I'm proud to say that by using some technology, license plate readers, and also just good old fashioned city in a car, sipping on a drink and doing surveillance, Detective Bills was able to identify the suspect vehicle. He tracked down the former owner, learned who he sold it to, and then learned where this particular individual who was driving the vehicle would often get a drink in the morning, one of the mavericks here in town, and he staked that out. Now, you know, you normally think of a stakeout, a big drug case, but he spent hours watching for this guy and did, he caught him this morning, hooked him up, brought him in, and interviewed him and obtained a full confession, and ultimately, we'll get some restitution for that church, but here's what's important. A number of people in our community, many, many of whom are immigrants from places where they did not enjoy freedom and where the police were always their enemy, now have a solid affirmation that the police, at least in this community, regard them like they matter, as we matter. I'm incredibly proud of Detective Bills. Look, you're not going to read about this in the paper. I don't think the news people will pick this up as a story, but you should know, that's how we value the people in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. In a testament, I have said many, many times that the police in our city do it right. We see a lot of organizations nationwide advocate for policing reform and other things, and most of the things that people advocate for that are the right thing, that are fair and that are good, are already happening in West Jordan. And so our officers are doing it right. Thanks, and in the largest part, to Chief Wallentine and his staff. So, thank you. Chief, is there a reception, or you've got anything planned for these guys? All right, we'll go ahead and, I mean, you're welcome to stay. I hear the next hour or so is going to be really fun for some of us. So if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to, but you are free to, free to go as well. Yeah, I hope they don't all leave. I got a panic button right here. I can, it's right there. All right, we'll go ahead and start into the public comment section of the agenda. That is the next item on the agenda. This is your opportunity to address the city council on anything on the agenda or not on the agenda. You have three minutes. This is kind of the open mic time for the residents or other stakeholders, so feel free to come on up, give us your name. We like to know if you're a West Jordan resident, just for the record, and we'll give you three minutes. Thank you.
Jake McNinch, West Jordan city resident. Good evening, council. I'm not sure why we are here, just ten business days after we just postponed the Copper Meadows agenda item. You all sat there and voted for it and said that there were issues with it, and that the issues needed to be fixed, and now we're here 10 days later, and no issues have been fixed, and we are bringing this to a vote. Why? Because the developer needs an answer by the end of the month. Are you kidding me? We want this development done correctly. We want the issues fixed. We don't care that the developer wants an answer by the end of the month. We care that it's done correctly. There are several issues with this development. It's the reason it was postponed 10 business days ago. It is not consistent with the recently adopted general land map use that was adopted in 2023. The developer never testified, the landowners never testified at one of those open houses, not one. Why? The setbacks listed and lot sizes do not allow for compatibility with existing neighborhoods. They do not. There is no ERUs available in the city's current water pressure zone seven, and the MDA on page seven states that the developer can pay for this and the city can pay them back. That is not an acceptable solution to we, the people. We don't want to pay for their upgrades. The sewer pipe needs to be upgraded. The City Code 13-7C-4 states that the application, together with all concurrent applications, shall be placed on a city council work session. That was not done. It says "shall." Grading, the applicant has not supplied any details on agreements on how the gravel pit will be graded. The grading should be coordinated so that homes in both Jones Ranch and Copper Meadows will have consistent grading. We don't need homes towering over one another because of grading. Giving entitlements before annexation, in the words of Kelvin, is silly. Annexation is not an easy process, and if they can annex the land, then we, the neighbors, don't get a hiking trail that we were promised. Annex the land before you give entitlements. There are several more issues that need to be resolved before voting on this. I asked the council tonight to vote for a postponement.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the council?
Brian Erickson, West Jordan resident. I can't tell you how much I don't really want to be here. This is like the opposite of something I want to do, and I'm here because of the hard work that my neighbors have done to shed light on what this development would do to our neighborhoods. And I feel like these issues definitely should be fixed before we approve it, because if it's approved, what incentive do they have to fix it, if it's been approved at all? Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Mata. I'm a resident of Salt Lake City, and I volunteer for a animal welfare nonprofit called Bailing Out Benji. And I just wanted to recount a news article from last year from Henderson, Nevada. A customer bought a puppy from the puppy store, and again, this is in Nevada, not the puppy store in Jordan Landing, but owned by the same person. He bought a Siberian husky puppy for $3,500, and on the veterinary health exam paperwork, there was, it just said apparently healthy, but there was a bunch of words that were whited out, and this new owner discovered this when the dog had a lot of upper respiratory issues, took the dog into the vet, and the dog was diagnosed with pneumonia. So the owner went back to the puppy store. They gave him a copy of, like, the real health certificate, and he discovered that he was not told the true nature of the dog's health. At the time of this news article, the owner paid about $3,500 in vet bills, which reportedly he will be compensated by the store, because that's what he paid for the dog. And the dog is recovering, or had recovered, so that's good news. But this is just an example of the shady business practices that the puppy store and their owner practice in frequently. So I encourage y'all to adopt an animal from a shelter, a rescue, or a reputable breeder instead of buying puppies from the puppy store. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the council in the group?
Hello, my name is Nathan Warkeys. I just want to, first want to say thank you to various representatives for discussing things with us and being willing to discuss things with us. Bob, Kailene, and Kent, in particular, really thank you for discussing and being willing to discuss with some of the meetings that we aren't going to be able to have because of this vote tonight, so I appreciate that. Also, thanks, Warren. I think you sent me an email today, and I appreciate that. I just want to say that we've hashed out all the other things that, you know, we feel are not working out for this community, whether it's parking, whether it's the land that's just not going to be usable in that corner, whether it's the grading, it feels like the PC is just being used to cover up land issues. I'm not going to ask that you postpone the vote. Actually, I am going to ask that you either postpone the vote or vote no, and it's a really simple thing. You've heard from me before, we've talked at length on that, and so just want to say, appreciate various members of the group. I do not appreciate that it was stated that this would not come during this year by Zach previously. I don't appreciate that it was stated that it would be an agenda item for some other chair, is what it was said over on the public comment, and then having it come 10 business days later is very frustrating, and I honestly don't appreciate that, Zach, so I just want to point that out and say, please vote no, or vote to postpone and fix the parking that's going to be an issue, just like there on 7800 South, and just off of Bacchus, and the land that's not going to be usable because the PC designation is going to make it so that they can make that land unusable. And so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Yeah, thank you, council members. I'm Blake Williams, a member of the, or a resident of the Sycamores neighborhood. I have a few topics, and, you know, slow that clock down for me, but, you know, a couple of the things that came up, you know, 10 days ago, 10 business days ago, I saw a couple of you really were struggling with your passion around property rights and the rights of this property owner. Now, I thought about that, and I thought about the history and why we're here, and one of the things that Builder has said is that because of the way the property has been used, this is the only way to profitably develop it. Well, that's not true. And I think, so the property owner, he made a decision. He allowed a gravel company, an asphalt company, to use the property. He didn't oversee it, he didn't police it, he didn't, he wasn't a good steward of his own property. That asphalt company caused irreparable damage or expensive damage that now needs to be addressed before it can be developed. I think that that's kind of like me renting out my house and having a renter come in and kick down doors and punch holes in walls and let, and take the appliances and the cabinets and walk out the front door, and then me as a property owner to say, well, I want to sell it for $800,000, just like my neighbor is selling their house. That's just not how it works, right? That's not how the free market works. How it works is now I have to reduce the cost. I used my property rights to use it how I did. Now I have to reduce the cost, and then somebody will come and take that property and use it as it is zoned. So that's how we should handle this, right? Now, a couple of other things that have really concerned me is that, we've talked about this four times, I've been at this podium four times, and I, I'll tell you, you should be as discouraged as me to look around and see that your citizens are starting to give up, because they feel like this is that marathon game that you see on TV and Parks and Rec and whatever, right? People are starting to just say, what we care about doesn't matter. That should hurt. That should hurt you all. And I think that that's the sentiment. Now, a couple of things just haven't been fixed, right? Water isn't fixed. Parking isn't fixed. The driveways aren't fixed. They're still annexing property that we asked them to come back and comment on, they haven't commented on, they've just asked for a yes or no. In my book, that means they asked for a no, right? Now, you also talked about money. Is it a money thing? We care about our property values. There's a big difference between a money concern for somebody who scraped and scrambled to get into their home and a developer or a person trying...
Thank you. Got to be equal for everybody's time here. Next, anybody else would like to come on up?
My name is Christian Crook. I live in the High Point Development right by this. I'm asking you to postpone or to vote no tonight as well. I guess I haven't seen yet anyone articulate a coherent and understandable reason why this should be rezoned. And that's what I think you guys have to do, is convince us that this should be rezoned for whatever reasons. I haven't heard that articulated. I understand the motivations of people involved. I understand the motivations of the person who owns the property, right? They want to sell their property, they want to, you know, make money on it, put as little into it as they possibly can and get the greatest return. I get that. That makes sense to me. I understand Peterson's point of view. They want to pay as little as possible for the property, invest as little as possible as they can, build as many units as they can, and make money. That's, I work for a company who tries to optimize their resources as well, that's why I have a job. I understand that, and I think it's our job as citizens and your job as a city council to stick to the plan and say, well, here's what we, here's why we plan this as very low-density housing, you know, that's our plan, we had good reasons, and if we want to change it, provide us with really compelling reasons as to why that designation should be changed. I haven't heard anyone, I don't feel like I've had a good explanation on that. So I would ask you to either postpone or to vote no on the Copper Meadows development tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Hi, Rob Bennett, West Jordan city resident. It's amazing that the city actually has more than one item of business on the agenda tonight. I'd like to speak to business item 7B. That item is regarding the failure of candidates running for office to not file their campaign disclosure agreements, or their, what they have been contributed to their campaigns after a certain amount of time. And there's been some difficulty with that in the city, and there have been certain people that have kind of disregarded that rule because they just opted to not follow it, even though it is the law. And I really think that it is in the citizens' best interest and in the interest of democracy to have as open a venue as possible to see where the money is coming from that flows into our candidates' pockets to use to help them file for their candidacy and to conduct their candidacy. It's very important for us to have that transparency, and I really would like to encourage you to vote yes on that item tonight. It is very important for me as a citizen and as a former person who has run for office before. I felt that it was very important for me to comply with all of the requirements so that I could honestly say that I honor, obey, and sustain the law, and I think that all candidates should be held to that standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody else who'd like to address the council?
My name is Josh Schreiber, and I'm a Sycamores resident. I'm here to speak on the Copper Meadows development. So at our last meeting, I was, I left fairly frustrated as I, at the last portion, had to listen in on Zoom, and I was really proud and have been proud of my fellow community citizens that have come and spoken to you and voiced their concerns, some with a little bit of passion and some very softly. But the frustrating part was how that was misunderstood from certain members up here who said they heard their members say they hated their neighborhood. They heard their members say they moved away from areas like this for unknown reasons. They, no one ever said they hated their neighborhood. What they said they hated was the fact that they moved into a beautiful place, and then because it's already somewhat high density, this is the lower end of the Sycamores, that there is no room for parking. They had a beautiful area, but as soon as the residents started moving in there and condensing and moving multiple families into these homes, the place became unbeautiful. Other people left places in different cities to move out here into this beautiful area to avoid those things as well. Those things are the things that you are saying that you want to vote yes for, you want to build back that same thing that these people have escaped from. We know Petersons are going to build a great development when they get to that point. I don't think that we're there. You've already heard those arguments, and I think what I'm hearing from you is you're saying by keeping, moving these dates up, the citizens aren't hearing us. What the citizens aren't hearing is we're moving forward no matter what. We've made a decision. Petersons have come to us with a development, they know where they're going to put their houses at, they have a land, a piece of land to do that, and we're going to go ahead and let them do that. The reality is, we're going to be moving, running through, driving through that neighborhood, and we're going to realize we could have done better. You could have done better. We're not doing the best for this particular beautiful piece of land, and I would ask you, think of that. We can't undo what they are proposing to do. I want you, us, to be proud of the development that they're putting forth, and right now it's one house box on top of another. It's future complaints from people calling in saying, hey, the snowplows can't get through. Why did you let them build these high, dense houses? Because there's no room to park. The beauty is there in a photo, it's, beauty is there in the way they've projected this to us, but it leaves as soon as those residents start moving in and overrunning those streets, and we lose that beauty. I mentioned it before, there is no more land west of that area to build upon. This is it. Let's do the best thing we can for this piece of land. If that means we vote no, or we postpone this vote to have that discussion and make this better, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
...in the city. I actually live in High Point. I will talk a little bit later about High Point Development Area, but I would like to bring up something that, when I go out and I recreate, I don't go to West Jordan to recreate, I go to other cities to recreate. There's a couple trails that are in West Jordan, but they're very limited. And so I look there, and I've been looking for years at that rail that we have, the old abandoned rail line that goes from Coppertown down all the way to Magna. Yeah, part of it does go through the Department of the Navy's land, but they have a nice abandoned rail line. And I'm going, is there any plans or proposals around that are looking to develop it, to attract people to actually use West Jordan as a place to recreate? We know trails are used all the time. You see them all the time up in Park City, the Mountain View Corridor, you see the rails, the trails used there all the time. I'm just proposing that we look... look, because there is federal money for this. There is the county to help with this, that we could take that abandoned rail line and make it into a nice rail trail and connect the community together. Make that area on the west side by High Point and the Sycamores, make that into an area that could be attractable for a lot of different uses in that area. And so I just encourage you to develop more of this area that could be useful more for the community. Develop some of the resources that are actually there, that are just not that are not even being used, to attract more people. So I don't go to Copperton, or I don't go to I don't go to Harriman or some other places, actually go and recreate with my family. Do something to help bring attract people to our area to help people spend their money on the restaurants and the gas stations in our area instead of me spending money in the other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll give we'll give those in the room a break for a second here. We'll go online. Is there anybody online, Mr. Anderson, who's got a hand up?
Yes, currently on Zoom, there are 25 individuals that have joined and one has raised their hand. Sean Fielding.
Sean Fielding. We'll go to Sean Fielding. You should be able to unmute Sean and you'll have three minutes as well.
Thank you for having me talk. Unfortunately, unable to get there. This is my fourth meeting, at least my fourth meeting, that we've talked about High Point. I live in High Point and the proposed neighborhood that's supposed to go in. First of all, I want to I want to call out and praise Councilmember Whitelock for her willingness to listen to the people. In my in my position, in my view, in talking with other people, she has been the only one that has been vehemently listening and wanting to know what we, the people, want. It is not in the Constitution. It doesn't say, we, the council, we, the Congress, we, the president, it's we, the people. You, council, serve us. We put you in this position to listen to us, what your constituents want. You have heard to us, you've heard us ad nauseam over and over and over, hundreds of comments, petitions, emails, phone calls, that we do not want this community there. It is not the right place for it. They can build it elsewhere. They need to stay what is zoned. It needs to be remaining what is what is zoned. It is frustrating, as Jake Mnuch said earlier, I find it troubling that 10 days later, we again find us hashing out the same conversation that we just had. We spent almost five hours the last meeting, I believe, that we had. And it was an hour and a half of public comment against this. It was decided we were going to postpone. For some reason, for some subversive reason, Zach Jacobs said, oh, you know what? The developer wants it done or an answer by the end of the month. We're going to snow plow all of these comments. We had a meeting with Councilmember Whitelock tomorrow to go over what the community wanted. As council or as the chair, you disregarded that and said, nope, I'm going to do what I want. I'm going to do what Peterson wants. Whatever the community said, it is gone. And it's very frustrating. You work for us. We don't work for you. So I'm going to ask you again, please vote no. I'm not going to ask you to postpone. I'm going to ask you to vote no for this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other online, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, one more has raised their hand, profiled Bo.
Who's that?
With the profile name of Bo. No last name.
Okay, if you, Bo, okay. Bo, if that's you, go ahead and give us your name when you when you come on and you'll have three minutes.
All right. Hello, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me.
We can hear you.
All right. My name is Bo Swenson. I live in High Point. I'm a West Jordan, you know, West Jordan born, raised here my entire life and still am. I was going to read tonight from some stuff that I had written throughout the day, but I just kind of feel like speaking from the heart at this point. The first thing I would love to just kind of say is, I would love to praise Ms. Whitelock as well. She's been the only one to reach out. I don't know if others have reached out, but from my view, she's been the only one to reach out and try to hear us out on this. I really do feel that how this meeting was called is very suspicious, sly, devious, whatever you want to call it. It's it's just, I can't believe we're it's 10 business days. We just voted on this. And there's just something about that that just does not feel right. I wanted to talk about how, you know, maybe why this development isn't good or we would like to change. But it seems like over the last several times that I have either emailed or have commented previously, it doesn't really seem like that's working. And so I'm kind of at a loss for words at this point, almost. And one of my one of my other of our other neighbors said, you know, the the community is kind of starting to give up because we're just we're just tired. Not sad. That's really sad that the community is getting to that point. And I just don't want words to be twisted again like last time. One of the things that I mentioned last time was, you know, letting having a people who who live in different areas such as, you know, apartments or townhouses or carriage houses or even not even high density, they have different goals and values, wants and needs from their community. And that doesn't make them a lesser people. It's I come from an apartment. I come from townhouses. But those people should be placed where they are in a similar place with people who have the same kind of goals and needs and wants, not because they are a lesser people. And I just really wanted to point that out because last time I feel like my words were really skewed in a certain way, and I did not like that. Because I don't think lesser of people who live in these different types of areas. Please vote no on this. And I'm just getting we're just tired. We're tired of it. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any others online?
There's 25 users logged on. No hands are raised at this time.
All right, we'll come back to the room. Is there anybody else in the room who's decided that they want to address the council? Okay, I'm seeing-
Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, one more has raised their hand on Zoom, just as I said they weren't. It's Ashley Rains Partial.
Ashley, go ahead and unmute and you should have three minutes as well.
Thank you. I actually would like to, sorry, Ashley Rains Partial from the Hyde neighborhood. I am obviously in Zach Jacobs' area. I actually want to make a plea to the rest of the council. Zach doesn't represent us, and we've seen that time and time again. One developer requested a decision to be made over multiple of his constituents. And Zach moved forward without even talking to any of you about this. And I feel like what he did to the rest of you is what he does to his residents all the time. Originally, when this issue went before the Planning Council, a lot of us talked about concerns like schools and traffic and roads. And we were told that those issues are not things that we can address at this level, and the infrastructure will come, and the schools are Jordan District's problems. And so we changed what we did, and we quoted city codes, and we asked you guys to work within the current plan and to leave the designation. And then we were told by the Planning Commission, yeah, the plan doesn't really fit, and there's things that need to be changed, but we're just going to send it to the council anyways. And so then we, as a neighborhood and as a community, we showed up again and asked you guys to just say no. And you guys chose to punt. And we're in this cycle. The problem is, is that our representative isn't caring about us. And if you guys don't care about the infrastructure and you don't care about your own city plan and your own designations, what are we left to do? We can't advocate for ourselves based on the concerns that we have or city code and get through to our council member. So I would like to make a plea to the rest of the council to just protect our neighborhoods from Zach's motivation, whatever it might be, to drive this Peterson development forward. We have concerns. We want you to maintain the current designation. We want to work within the current plan. And we would like to work with the developer if the developer is really willing to work with us. Moving a tiny number of houses out doesn't truly address the problems that we have. But we have said time and time again that we are willing to work with you as the council, and we're willing to work with the developer. In response, we have our representative throwing this on an agenda 10 business days later and the day before another council member was willing to meet with us. You wonder why we're not showing up en masse anymore? It's because we're being blocked by every single thing. And I really am, we don't have any options with our own representative. I'm asking the rest of the council to speak up for us.
Thank you. Alan, are there any others online?
There are 26 users online. No one has raised their hand at this time.
Anybody in the room for one last? All right, we'll go ahead and close citizen comment, period, and bring the next item on the agenda is reports to council. This is starting with council reports to each other in the public. Councilmember Whitelock.
I just want to acknowledge our students here. I'm pretty confident we have several jaguars in the room. So I so appreciate your teacher that assigns this to you. And tonight has been an excellent night for you to attend to see how the process should work, how you as a resident should be able to come and share your thoughts. So thank you for being here and good luck with that grade. You show me that you care about your grades because you're here. So good job.
Thank you. Councilmember Shelton.
First of all, I'd like to, they're not here in the room anymore, but I'd like to just speak in gratitude for our new officers who have taken their oath and had that badge pinned. Their families sacrifice a lot. Every time one of those officers walks out the door, that's a sacrifice to that family. And I appreciate that sacrifice and I appreciate those new officers. On the 22nd of November, I had an opportunity to go out to the Sprung Structures facility and have a tour there. Wasn't able to complete the tour. I had to leave before it was done, but what a great company for our city here in West Jordan. Sprung Structures builds instant buildings all across the United States and even around the world. And then on November 27th, had a great opportunity to go out and visit the Rocky Mountain Recycling Plant and take a tour there. And very, very interesting to actually see the recycling happening. And if my next door neighbor is listening, I have to apologize. The next day was garbage day and they were out of town. And I took their recycle bin out to the street and I opened it. I shouldn't have opened it, but I opened it. And I'm very embarrassed. I'm going to admit publicly, if they might have me on camera sifting through their through their recycle bin, because there were a lot of things that didn't belong in there. So I'm embarrassed, but I wanted to admit that publicly to everybody. And recycling and doing it right is a good thing. And so anyway, December 2nd, just on Monday, I had the a great opportunity to go and see a production by the West Jordan Arts Council, A Christmas Carol. And it helped to get me in the Christmas spirit. It was a fabulous production, and I encourage everyone to go and see that. It was great. So that's my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Bedore.
Some of mine will echo very much Kent, Councilmember Shelton, although I did not go through my neighbor's garbage, nor will I. But I have to say, one thing that caught me by surprise in sitting on this dais is whenever we have those badging ceremonies, I had no idea that that was going to be a takeaway for me as one of the best moments of being here and seeing that and being a part of that. It really has caught me. When we have these, when we have our new police officers, when we have our new fire department people, when we when we recognize these people who are going to put their lives on the line for the citizens of this city, I had no idea how much that was going to affect me every single time. And it has been my favorite moment of being on this council. And there have been a lot of good moments, but I, for whatever reason, that's become just the thing that gets me every time. I also want to comment about the West Jordan Arts production of A Christmas Carol. I went and saw it last night. And what is interesting about that, what a lot of people won't know, is that it was adapted by a West Jordan residence resident, Patronella Oliver, wrote that and directed it, and has a lot of West Jordan people in it. And it is, as someone who has written shows myself, I always admire the people who have the process of doing that. And if you're a fan of A Christmas Carol, I certainly hope that you will go see that because she has made sure it is as accurate as she can get it on a on a little stage and on the budget that they have. And it's a very well done and the cast is great. So I just want to put out that. They have a show tomorrow, Friday, I think two shows on Saturday. And I think it should be a part of your holiday plans, if you can make that happen, and know that it was very much a West Jordan production. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. With Councilmember Bedore and Councilmember Shelton talking about the plays that are going this year, it just reminded me, and we probably talked about it before, but I just wanted to thank the staff and our construction company for the hard work that they've done on our Community Arts Center. Before I was on the council, well, it's been about six years now, the former council before me approved an arts center. And it's taken six to eight years now for it to finally come to fruition. And I'm not laughing. I'm actually happy because the the money that was set aside was set aside for that arts center, and now it's almost done. And I'm really excited to see it be finished. So that these plays that you guys talk about, we don't have to go to the Midville Arts Center anymore. We can have our West Jordan plays here in our own city. We can have our concerts in our own arts community facility. And the facility will be used for more than arts as well. It's a it's a it's a big box theater that's made so that we can have big gatherings that we aren't able to have here in our city hall. And we're not able to have at the Veridian because the Veridian's busy and not available. So I'm excited for that to be finished. As far as I've heard, there's a chance it could be finished in July, maybe. But if not, it should be finished by the end of next year. So when you guys get an opportunity, if you're driving by the the pool over there and the and the gym, take a look at the arts facility over there and stop by when it gets finished in a few months. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on the, that's everybody. Oh, Kellen? Nope, we're good. All right. Next item is council office report. We'll go to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, council. Just an update for the residents that are here and the students from West Jordan High. Couple months ago, the city council made adjustments to their meeting schedule. So starting next month, city council meeting will start on be moved to Tuesdays with the committee of the whole work session starting at four o'clock and regular city council meeting moving to seven o'clock. We're working with the Communications Department for some public outreach on that. Additionally, the hardware that will allow full transcription of city council meeting, planning commission meeting, design review, and the other public bodies will be installed. It's sort of installed now, but we've got to get it configured. So the configuration will be next Friday at this point. What that will provide not only will be the transcription, but it will also provide closed captioning, live during council meeting and planning commission design review in English and Spanish to reach all the residents that we have for that. So about last survey in the census shows about 75% of our residents are English speaking and 25% are Spanish speaking. And I'm working with Marie in Communications again for- And I'm working with Marie in communications again for outreach and also some redesign of the council pages. On the website so that all of that is more accessible. That includes a recommendation to have a. Click to join link on the homepage and we're working with our website provider. So that people can just go to the homepage and join the meeting when they're they're active. We're still. We're still working through some kinks on that one, but those are things that we are working on here over the next month or so. And that's our report for today. Thank you.
Perfect. Let's see, the mayor is not here. I hear the. City administrator's report will kind of encompass that as well. So we'll go to Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the mayor's at an event with the governor and lieutenant governor. He should be joining us later this evening. I apologize for his absence right now. I'll fill in a couple of things from the mayor's report. No, just timing, just timing, not importance. Just want to make you aware of a couple of things happening around the city. We have we have really great, great volunteers. Throughout the community and sometimes they get away with doing a volunteer event without even. Letting us know or celebrate, but recently we have the itinerary students. Come over to Veterans Memorial Park and do a park cleanup. It was really a nice event. I just wanted to let you know about that. It occurred a couple of weeks ago. Councilman Shelton also mentioned the sprung structures facility tour. They're a really great business partner in our community and doing amazing things out there. I won't elaborate further as it was mentioned prior. This week. On Friday is our first Friday holiday event. We are partnering with the library, as you know, and to do monthly first Friday events. This is our holiday event for the year as well. There will be a drone show. There will be smores. Santa will be coming. It will be a really a great event. There will be a lot happening that evening in addition to a concert. All the activities start at 6:00 PM at the Veridian Center. Please come. It's going to be a lot of fun. It'll be a nice evening. Also, just want to make you aware, the mayor has open office hours regularly. His next open office hours are this Thursday, December 5th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Finally, Councilman Lamb, you mentioned the arts center. Just want to give you a comment about that. It is coming along. It's great. If you've driven by, you notice they're getting the glass up. It's really looking good. They're actually a little bit ahead of schedule on the north end of the building. We hope it will be done by May. It was said July, but fingers crossed if all the electronic. Yeah. You know, it's reliant on some supply chain issues, electric transfer switches and other things arriving on time. We won't know for sure when it will be done and we won't feel confident about a completion schedule until early February. So at that time, we'll start to land on a schedule and work with the Cultural Arts Society on. The first few performances that will occur there. But that's the timeline we're looking at. So I think hopefully if all goes well, we can expect May or June as a as a timeframe for its opening. But it is looking great. Please drive by it if you haven't recently because it's starting to look like the picture. It's awesome. It's a it's a great thing in the community. It's going to be a lot of fun to have that available to celebrate the arts and other events in West Jordan. That's it for this evening.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Couple of questions, Mr. Lee. And you mentioned that Santa would be arriving, but not what time. What time will Santa arrive? Do you know?
I do not know what time Santa arrives.
It's kind of important.
It's it is a government event, so probably about six months after we think he's going to arrive.
The supply chain. Yeah, that's probably it. The other question is, we talked previously about a meeting with the Meadowlark Lane. Residents, when is that going to occur or has it occurred?
Councilmember Whitelock, I'm happy to answer that question. So that meeting will occur tomorrow night at 6:00. And it's in the community room, which is on the first floor of this building on the south side. So all the residents of that area are welcome to attend. We'll have. We'll be presenting different options and then gathering their feedback about those options and we'll go from there.
And how have the residents been informed of this meeting?
I know that our community liaison Ariel has has let them know. I believe there's been flyers sent out. And it's been, I believe. Marie, our community, our communications manager has also been involved with that, but I'm not 100% sure. Yes, well, sort of, she said. So yes, that's been. I believe that occurred two to three weeks ago, so they should have received notice by now.
Okay, thank you.
I did get word from the North Pole.
Oh.
Santa's arriving at 6:45 on Friday.
Plus or minus three hours. Santa is not on the West Jordan payroll, technically speaking, so you know, we're hoping that. North Pole time is better than government time. Councilmember Green.
I just wanted to make sure that. Our public utilities people were given a congratulations. 13th West was actually completed before Thanksgiving. It is open between 70th and 78th, but our friends from the gas company decided to shut down the park. That makes it hard for me to get to get my car license, so I have to go down and flip use. Never mind. We'll get past that, but at least most of 70th South is open and the only thing I have to dodge every now and then is a Google Fiber Truck. They're trying to do something. But that's a major accomplishment. So thank you, Greg, for getting that and getting it done before Thanksgiving. And anyway, thank you.
Excellent. See, Santa's got to be on the same as the public works people, so they'll be there early. All right, that's awesome. Next item on the agenda, we have a sustainability committee report. And I don't have a name on this, so we'll go to the sustainability committee.
Rachel O'Crowley.
Hi, Rachel.
I don't get a clicker. Can I have a clicker?
We we use the vocal version. Next slide. No, I'm just kidding.
Next. All right, okay. All right, not ready for this. What we've been up to. The community market has been organized by the Sustainability Committee and it occurs once a month, June through September. On the second Tuesday of every month. And we're partnering with the food truck night at Ronwood Park so that we can get more. Community members involved. Our focus is on encouraging residents to purchase local and support home based. Commerce. We typically get 12 to 15 vendors each week. And we do a produce purchase or exchange. On the last two markets of the season, which is really cool because then we can see everybody else's garden things and share because we have too much in our gardens. And the community or the community gardens. Well, that's we've been working on the community gardens with the Public Services Department. We're trying to establish one over here at the senior or senior center park. And we're using this as a test site to see if there's future interest in more gardens around the city, which we really hope there are. And we are going to need some help cleaning up and rebuilding the community garden for use in 2025. We also took a tour of this beautifully remodeled city hall and to see and understand the sustainability and efficiency efforts included in the building. Some of those things are insulation, air control, mechanical systems. LED lighting systems and planning for future growth, which was really good because then we don't have to redo it. And the bike with the mayor showcases alternative transportation options, which after the air in the last few days. We greatly appreciate. We would love for this to happen more often and we would love for all of you guys to be involved in that. What we want to do next. And we would love to start doing the sustainability awards. These awards are going to recognize businesses and organizations in the community. And that are working on being more sustainable and effective, I think, for sustainability. We would like to have these nominations in the winter of 2425 and give the awards in spring of 2025. We are working on a seed exchange program, which is free for the. Excuse me, for the community. And will also be a part of the community garden. We need help with materials for housing, labeling and organizing donated seeds. We would also like to add air quality monitors around West Jordan. This is going to add to the Valleywide network of air quality status inputs so we can focus on. What we need. We will need support from the city, the school district and locating. And help locating the air quality monitors. Besides the two things we already mentioned that we need help with. We are really thankful for the Title II Committee's appropriation that you guys gave us. That was very nice. We want you to continue to support. The executive committees with this funding money. And we also want you to continue promoting and requiring water conservation through the city resources. We like the updated landscaping standards for new construction that require water wise landscapes. We support the water conservation plan that's coming to you guys in the next meeting. We also support additional water conservation experts. Such as reducing the non usable turf at city hall and other city facilities. And the committee is very supportive of the Big Ben project and we do encourage city council to continue efforts to develop this. Very important natural area. Our committee has very few active members right now, so we also would love for you guys to reach out to whoever. Your constituents are and see if you can help us get some more committee mentors. That's all from me and what do you guys have questions?
There are a couple lights on. I just wanted to ask really quick, when do you meet?
We meet the third Thursday of every month at 6:30.
Here?
Online.
Oh, online, okay. Awesome. So yeah, you can join theirs in meeting. Awesome. Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Green. You were first. Oh, that was the question you had?
Fine, be that way. You were asking for help on the the garden, on the community garden cleanup.
Yeah.
I would recommend that you give your contact information to Mr. Hallmark. He's the one in the middle over there. Because that sounds like a good project that the youth council might want to jump in on. So we may be able to to have the youth council help out with that. So make sure he's got your contact information. And I love the seed exchange program, so yeah.
I'm sure he has your information from staff or we can get it. So.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? No.
I would also like to say that we do. There were some a member in here that said that. We want more hiking trails and stuff. We have definitely looked into all of those things and we. Definitely do recommendations for the city, so I just want them to know that. People in the city are working on this.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Alan, can somebody make a note to give me the contact information for the sustainability committee members? Because I have some things I want to ask them to maybe look at. Awesome. All right. Next item on the agenda. So I'm sure why everybody came tonight is our first public hearing. Of the evening. This is ordinance 2455, amending the general plan future land use map. For 6.23 acres at 6676 and 6686 South Redwood Road. And we have Mr. Gardner.
Good evening, council. As the council mayor may not be aware, the city is required every year to. Submit a moderate income housing report to the state of Utah and how we are. Implementing the strategies that were adopted by the city council as part of the general plan. Strategy F. Okay. And I'll flip. Strategy F, as you can see in the moderate income housing plan. Item G. Is a benchmark or a measure of a benchmark and it says update future land use map in each residential overlay. District area to reflect their future rezone. And complete that by July 31st, 2024. Our original intent was to change the land use map when an actual application for an entitlement came. To the city that was not acceptable to the state of Utah. And they deemed us non compliant with our moderate income housing strategy. And you ask, well, what does that mean? It means that if we're not compliant, that they could withhold withhold transportation funding and. And that, which I think would be not good for the city. And so what this is asking, what I'm asking tonight is that. This area, which is north of the Grace Company. Change the future land use map to. As you can see on the right, the designation, leave the community commercial there, but put potential residential overlay district. And that will bring us into compliance with our strategy, which hopefully will bring us in compliance with the moderate income housing report sent to the state. Now I'd like to add that this is not an entitlement. It is just a guide for a rezone if. There happens to be an application come forward to use the residential overlay district. I think as the council may remember, there's been. Over the years, an applicant has wanted to build apartments there, but not really want to follow the ordinance. And you know, this is the only way that I think that the council would entertain. Multi-family, this location is using the residential overlay district. And so that is the really the request tonight is to change the future land use map to ROD. Do you have any questions for me?
I'll go first to Councilmember Green. I definitely have a question, but let's.
So the residential overlay district, that's the one that's already in code.
Correct.
That's the one with that the county that we did for.
I think you were.
The Jordan Land. I was on the planning commission, but when I say we.
Exactly.
Council, that that's the one we did for Jordan Landing out in the North 40.
Correct.
Okay, so my second question would be. Do we need, is the state going to buy the word potential residential overlay district? Or do we just need to drop the word potential and just say it's a it's a residential overlay district because it's on that.
We can drop the word potential. You know, you're probably right.
Which one's better?
Just just call it residential overlay because it can be overlaid, the commercial zone, get rid of potential.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I'd rather make it clean.
So would I.
So, okay, thank you. Councilmember Shelton.
So I'm just wondering. Well, some back some backstory on this. I I met with. A developer who wanted to. Have us change the zoning on this to residential. I don't know exactly where that went, but was was this site chosen for the ROD? Because of that applicant and their in their your knowledge of their desire?
No, when the. When the residential overlay district ordinance was adopted. It either allows and what it is, the goal is to. Construct housing in commercial areas to try to keep commercial areas vibrant and add housing to those areas. The owners of Jordan Landing at one time had a desire to do that and that's where the ordinance came from. But we also looked at a couple other areas. And one of them is the old abandoned Kmart, which is now Hmart, which I think is a marvelous and much, much better use than housing would be. So that area dropped off the Jordan Landing and this is the last area because it's part of a. 15 or acre more commercial development that are. I think it's a commercial development that's been continuously zoned. For SC2 for 15 years or longer. And that property happened to be meet that criteria. It was owned by, see, this residential developer purchased it and wanted to use. The residential overlay district tool to build apartments. His his issue is he doesn't want to follow the ordinance. He constantly wants to change the ordinance and not do the structured parking and. The commercial component that's part of the residential overlay district and that. And so I think the ROD would be a wonderful tool for this area if we could get somebody to follow the ordinance, so.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. And that was kind of my same question is, are we?
Thank you, Chair. And that was kind of my same question is, are we? Obviously, this is not the first applicant that's asked about that property, right? This is probably the third or fourth.
No, it's the same one.
It's the same one, but it seems like there were like two before that as well, so.
There's been, there's been housing developers that he has tried to sell it to. And they've always come back with the same solution as the structured parking is too expensive. We can't do it in West Jordan because your rents don't support it.
Okay.
The same owner.
So he doesn't want to put a car wash back there?
No.
All right, thanks.
Or a, or a, or a clinic. Yeah, my, my question was similar to Councilmember Green's about the, the word potential. I, I find that a little weird to, to put a potential overlay district on a, on anything. It's like.
We, we remove the word potential.
Yeah, I just, that, that struck me as, as kind of odd.
I probably was lacking my diet coke when I wrote that. I don't know.
May I suggest Diet Dr. Pepper? Okay, all right. That was, that was kind of my only question. We'll go to the public hearing and then I will, we'll chat about it as a council. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Uh, if you would like to address the council, this is a public hearing, so specifically on the item here at, at Redwood Road. And this residential overlay district potential designation. This would be your time to address the council. You don't have to raise your hand. You can just come on up or, or not. Uh, Mr. Anderson, are there any online with a hand raised that would like to speak on this issue?
Yes, Chair. There are thirty two individuals online and a person by the name of Chris has raised their hand.
Okay, Chris, give us your name and we'll give you three minutes on this.
Good evening, council. Chris McConaughey here. My apologies, I'm on a different computer that I can't figure out how to get my full name out there, but it is me. Just really quick on this. I think this is a good area to try this zone for. It's not directly, it, it's in a little bit of a unique zone. There's more connectivity to Redwood Road than the neighborhoods that are off of the Canal Road. And given some of the experiences that we've had in the past, it seems like a good place to try this. Commercial doesn't necessarily seem like the best fit. We've had lots of struggles with commercial right in this area. I think residential, as Mr. Gardner said, could be a good fit if we can find an applicant who's willing to follow the rules. So I would express my support for this as long as we can find somebody who will follow the rules to use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to hear from you. Anybody else on the, on the, online who'd like to address the council on this?
Uh, still thirty two, uh, people online and no one has, has their hand raised.
Okay, anybody else in the room? We'll go one more time. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. You can stop the timer, by the way. And, uh, and bring it back to the council for discussions and motions and stuff like that. Councilmember Green.
Is there any discussion for this? Cause I would just go, like to make a motion.
You make a motion before.
I would, I would like to, I, I will, I will move to approve ordinance number twenty five, twenty. I can't even read English. Ordinance number twenty four dash fifty five amending the general plan. Future land use map for six point two three acres at sixty six seventy six and sixty six eighty six. South Redwood Road adding. The residential overlay district designation. And removing the word potential from the ordinance in lines fifteen and twenty seven. Of the ordinance.
Second. All right, thank you. We got a motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Lamb. I'm going to go ahead and speak in favor of this motion. The word potential was really bothering me. Taking that out cleans it right up. I was wondering what other potential districts we might potentially apply to some other potential properties and in some potential future. So I'm, I'm glad we're taking that out. So this is, this is a positive move in my opinion. I've met with a developer on this as well and, and had some productive conversations, potentially. Uh, anybody else on this? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Cindy.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Thank you. I show the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. I'll note that I failed to mention at the top of the meeting that Councilmember Bloom is joining us online. It's good to have you. All right, six B on the agenda is a public hearing for ordinance twenty four dash fifty four. Amending the city code section thirteen dash five I dash five for the city center zone. Regarding residential density, moderate income housing requirements and maximum density limits. Mr. Gardner, you get a hit twice in a row.
So this is the same request. The city center zone was, it's part of the station three. Station area plan that the city adopted last summer. Uh, the ultimate goal is to revamp the entire city center zone ordinance. Um, however. When I told the state of Utah that, they said, well, you're still not compliant with your strategy. And so what the. Request is, as you can see in strategy G, modify the city center's online use regulation by December thirty first, twenty twenty three. You know, measure A is analyze the city center's own ordinance and determine percentage and qualifications for new moderate income housing development. And then determine how moderate income housing should be integrated into the city center zone. So this is a very bare bones amendment to the city center. Uh, zoning ordinance. The first thing is a little bit of housekeeping. The city center, original city center zone was adopted in, I believe, two thousand seven or two thousand eight. And in the use table, it never really stated whether multifamily residential was a permitted or conditional use. It was inferred in the rest of the ordinance, but I feel like it needs to be in the use table that it is a permitted use. And secondly, you know, according to the strategy, um, as you can see in thirteen five I five. See, all residential uses shall contain a minimum of ten percent moderate income housing. Based on the total unit count for each building. So again, that gives a percentage of moderate income housing and a, how it is integrated into the project. And or project is approved by the city council through a master development agreement. And the reason that we put that last master development agreement requirement in is because. The state of Utah requires cities to. Put moderate income housing in their city, but if it's not as part of a density buy up. Or as part of a master development agreement, guess who gets to pay for it? The city. And I don't understand that, but that will hopefully satisfy that requirement. If this ever comes to development. But I, I firmly believe that we'll have another ordinance amendment long before the development goes into the city center zone. And then finally, a use in the use table of mixed use commercial. The minimum density will be fourteen units per acre and the maximum will be eighty. And then multifamily will go from fifty to eighty. And that is following the stationary area plan that was adopted, uh, last summer. So these are, this satisfies the strategy by. Giving the percentage of moderate income housing plan. And the reason for the ten percent is if the city is to apply for any state funding. To help develop that property across the street, it has to be a minimum of ten percent moderate income housing. Now, the council can determine the percentage. If you want to change it to five or something else, that is up to you. But my recommendation with tonight, if you really want it, would be just to leave it at ten percent. Until the next ordinance amendment and then you can determine what you really want for the unit count over there. And so this meets the requirements of, uh, strategy G. And hopefully will bring us in compliance with the state of Utah. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for staff, Mr. Green, Councilmember Green.
I'll ask one. When do we anticipate rewriting this ordinance?
Next year.
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, of course.
As we're looking at this, maybe this is a perfect opportunity for us to look at some form based zoning and simplify the code. And just a couple of standards and just make it form based zoning with some of these density ranges. And forget a lot of the other stuff and see what we can come up with.
I think that is a wonderful idea. So we'll, we'll take that suggestion, so.
Further questions for the public hearing? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Larry. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this. Uh, this is the public's chance to address the council on this topic regarding residential density in the city center zones. Potentially, just kidding. If anybody would like to address the council now is your opportunity. Not seeing any in the room. Are there any online, Mr. Anderson, who would like to address this?
The short answer is no. There's thirty two online and none have raised their hand.
Short answers are great. That's fine. Um, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this and bring it back to the council for discussions or motions. Councilmember Green.
I'll do it. I'm going to move to approve ordinance number twenty four dash fifty four amending city code section thirteen. Five, is that I? Five I, uh, five. City center zones regarding residential density, moderate income housing requirements and maxity, maximum density limits.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Shelton. Is there a discussion to the motion? I am not seeing any, so we'll go to a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is business item seven A. This is ordinance twenty four forty seven and ordinance twenty four forty eight. Uh, which include a master development agreement slash plan for Copper Meadows. And amending the general plan land use map to low density residential and rezoned planned community. For the same property. Uh, as everyone knows, this was brought to us, uh, in our last meeting. Councilmember Green, you asked to postpone. And that was granted by the council, so we'll go to you for the reasons and questions that you might have had and answers you might have received, et cetera.
Yes, thank you. So I was the one that, uh, made the postponement. To be clear on a couple of things, it was to clear up a couple of questions that I had and not necessarily to. Postpone it to have further public comment, public hearings. The four, the four things that I had questions on, actually had three and a fourth one came up over the weekend that I was working on this. One, there was a question on the detention pond and, and because, uh, as had been presented to us in the open meeting. It was going to be non landscaped, natural open space, uh, those kind of things. I've got that cleared up and, uh, and you'll see, and I'll tell you what you have in front of you in a second. Three, uh, the, 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 the second thing. I had some questions on whether Peterson would be amenable to some house play, some, some movement of some buildings. As Councilmember Jacob, you had done on the telestrator and was curious to see if they would be willing to move some of those buildings around. Three, I wanted to clarify a couple of things on the gravel pit. And as I was working on that, I found that there might have been a discrepancy in the acreage. The, so I'll start with that one first. The original, the, the, the M D, the M D P and M D A talk about seventy six point sixteen acres. If you go to the county assessor website, it's actually eighty point two five acres. Um, I feel sorry for the Jones family who's been paying for four acres of, four acres of property tax for the last how many years? And not really owned the four acres of land. Uh, the, the survey did come back and verify that it was seventy six point sixteen acres and so that was accurate. So that issue was resolved. You could ask, if you want to ask the, 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 the gentleman from Peterson Development. I called them starting the first morning after we postponed this and I pushed pretty hard. They probably got tired of me calling them and pushing them, uh, about questions and asking about the development. Jeff's nodding his head yes, so I can, yeah, I did push hard and Scott's online and he knows I pushed hard. Uh, we had some pretty, pretty, um, heavy conversations over the course of that week. For those of you that are here from the sycamores or online from the sycamores. The fact that Peterson's, uh, wanted to move the, move this back to the fourth ought to tell you something. I got some severe pushback on, on at least a couple of those items. But. And, and I've spent a lot of time on this, uh, to the point that I've missed two days worth of work because of this, so. We did, I, I was able to meet with, uh, Peterson Development. I got three things for them to, actually they had one ready. It just wasn't in the M D P. And so what you see in front of you are three pages that I would like to add as an amendment to the M D P. Um, Alan, do you have that on the slides or Warren, do you have that on the slides? The first one is to integrate, it was a drawing that they had. It just didn't get integrated into the M D P. And add this page to the M D P that shows the detention pond. And how it's, uh, going to be landscaped and maintained using water wise. To the sustainability committee, yes, water wise techniques. And so amendment number one would be to add this to the M D P. So that we know exactly the usability of that point nine eight, point nine acres and how it's going to be used. That clears up the usability issue that I had and a couple other things. Amendment number two, this was made by a, this suggestion was made by a resident. I'll address that a little later on in some comments, but this amendment was made specifically by a resident. In the area, there was some concern about potential weeds and those kind of things in the open space. This individual had worked before with the Utah Division of Conservation to, that they actually. Utah Division of Conservation actually tells you what kinds of seeds for the elevation and type of natural open space. You're going to do to what you should use to plant. And so it's been done on other developments. And Peterson's agreed to use, to use the Division of Conservation with that. And I understand that even Mr. Howell with, that's, that's working with Peterson's has already reached out to the Division of Conservation. To try to make this work appropriately. Amendment number three would be in addition to the design standards that would. One of the things that Peterson did agree to, and for those of you that don't think that the council heard you. What I heard was you didn't like a lot of what looked to be high density housing. You didn't like the look of townhomes and a couple other things. Peterson's is not willing to change the design now. But they did agree to determine the feasibility of changing the design of townhomes. That are currently depicted the way they are to look more like single family homes or estate mansions or those kind of things that you see in daybreak. The concession with that would be is that any changes in the design standards to, to make the home configuration look like a single family home. Would be considered a minor deviation in the master development plan. And the staff like Taylor, um, and, and Larry's staff and Scott's staff could approve that. So that is what I'm proposing for, uh, a couple of amendments. As I mentioned, I have pushed hard. Peterson's has agreed to all of these. Um, you can see Jeff nodding his head up and down. Peterson has agreed to all of these to add to the M D P to try to improve the project. And, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm adding those and saying that my, my, my issues that I had with this development. Have been resolved or will be resolved, uh, as best they can with these three amendments. And so I'll leave it with that, turn the rest of it over to discussion. the discussion, and then I'll join the discussion with some other comments.
Any further comments, discussions, motions, opinions? Councilmember Green, your mic is still on. Councilmember Whitelock?
So I spent a lot of time last night not sleeping and reading and remembering why, when people asked me to run for public office, that I eventually said yes. And the reason I eventually said yes is because my representative, and it was on the school board at the time, chose not, to not only not listen to me, but not to contact me when I specifically said, please call me back. And then their vote was totally opposite of, wow, I would have voted. And so that got me running, and I decided at that point that while I want to work with developers and with other entities, that those that I'm going to listen to and really take a lot from are the residents. I did that on the school board, and I do that on the council, I try. And so I am going to motion to postpone this for the reasons that we have heard many concerns from the residents, and I don't feel that we've had an opportunity for open discussion with them, nor, I mean, these are brand new, and I love these from Councilmember Green. This is great. I too have spoke with Peterson's and would like to work out some more, some additional changes. I understand where all of this is, but for those reasons, I am going to move to postpone ordinance number 2447.
Do you want to do both at the same time? Or you just want to do that one?
I'll do both. Ordinance 2448 as well.
We have a motion to postpone by Councilmember Whitelock. Is there a second? I'm not hearing a second, so we'll go ahead and rule that motion fails for lack of a second and go to continued discussion. Anyone else who'd like to weigh in? Councilmember Green?
I want to go through a couple of things and clarify a couple of things that we've got emails lately and a couple other things that were either said tonight or about this development. The motion to postpone was specifically, I made it because I had questions. Those questions have been cleared up. There was no agreement between me and any other resident on that postponement. I'm going to tell you that we've had four public hearings, and in four public hearings, all I keep hearing is no. I will tell you that two months ago, I told members of your group that I will come out and meet with you guys anytime that you want me to, to discuss this development, and I never asked. Now, I'm going to assume, and I'm going to make a terrible assumption, but I'm going to assume you didn't want to talk to anybody from the city because your mind was made up that you were going to, that all you wanted to do was say no. Okay? So unfortunately, I made those, I volunteered, and I got no invitation to come out and talk about any of the things that you're going to, some of these things that you're going to hear tonight. I was also at the Planning Commission meeting not too long ago, sat there, heard all of your comments, and not once then anybody approached me and say, we have meaningful solutions. All I heard was no. The, so let me run through a couple other things here. Somebody asked tonight, tell me the reason why we have to change the zone, because the existing zone doesn't work. The existing zone no longer is used in city code. The zone has to be rezoned no matter what. The, it's nearly impossible to say that a PC zone with 660 acres to the north that you live in and a PC zone of 600 acres to the south, the Jones Ranch, it's pretty hard to say 75 acres of PC zone is incompatible. I just lost my, okay. I heard a lot of you at Planning Commission tell me that you wanted R18. I heard that. Yeah, that was said from the podium, we want R18. Here's the paradox. You want R18, which is 380 units to the neighborhood. Peterson's are proposing 318. Yes, there would be a little bit of reduction because of some undevelopable land, but then you tell me that the traffic, we want higher, we want more houses, but the traffic's bad. There's a paradox there that I'm having a hard time resolving. I am going to tell you that this land's going to be developed whether you want it or not. It's a matter of what gets there. If somebody else wanted to know, why do we have to rezone this? Has anybody seen the newspaper lately? We're in a housing crisis. The legislature's involved, and the governor said we need more small houses with smaller lots to get people their first-time homes. I am going to, I also want to know, and I'm not going to have the staff go back and pull the original master development plan for the sycamores, but how many of you got your houses because of the high density? Your neighborhood is high density, and it's got higher density. Some of you have small, bigger lots, but the neighborhood was a PC with a mix, an awful lot like what we have now. This is not a high-density project. We are trying to make it better. The land is being sold at market value, and if the market value is probably because of the gravel pit, the land is worth less. Peterson's are not putting as many units on that land as they possibly can because they reduced the density from five, over five, to now 4.2. They listened to the neighbors and got it down to 4.2, and some of the design, including moving the townhomes down into the lower area on the side of the hill, were a direct result of neighborhood input. One of the proposed amendments that I'm proposing tonight was a direct result of a neighbor who called me the next day and said, we have an issue, how can we fix it? I was able to get that, I was able to get Peterson to concede to that, to fix that issue. Not once have I heard, you tell me, I didn't listen to you, not once have I had one of you call me and say, I have a meaningful solution. You say, well, we need to have solutions, we need to make it better. Not once have I heard anything proposed from the residents, except for this, that
Order. You had a chance, you had your three minutes.
We've had four public hearings. We've had a meeting at Nielsen's frozen yogurt. I volunteered to come out, so we can't say, oh, we didn't have an opportunity to be meaningfully engaged in the process. I've heard a whole bunch of things about claims that property values would go down. There's no demonstrable proof that the townhomes or smaller homes will develop, will bring your property down, because if there was demonstrable proof, it's because you have 39 townhomes and a whole bunch of small acreage houses within two, three, four tenths of a mile from your house. Across from Clay Hollow, there is another development that's high-density, and it's got over 100 acres left to be developed of higher density than this, and I've not heard one complaint from a resident for that. I've heard people say their property, that we should give them a property tax rebate because your property's going to go down. Property values are based on this year. Property values, they haven't gone down, and everything there is just pure speculation. Tonight, somebody mentioned annexation. I guess everybody missed the fact that the annexation process has already cleared the Planning Commission. They had a public hearing on the annexation, and nobody was there, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Langford. He's shaking his head yes. Now, a couple other things. Parking exceeds the ordinance. I'm not going to take, like, one, somebody sent me an email and said, well, just eliminate the parks and put parking in. First off, that violates the ordinance, and second, violates the general plan and a couple other things. We do have trails in West Jordan. We've got Barney's Wash. The rail trail outside isn't even in West Jordan City. We don't have any control over that. As was mentioned before, schools can't be addressed. Maybe this is the lesser of two evils, but I will guarantee you, and let me address one thing, and then I'll give you the, then I'll give you one more statement. I have to, sitting in this chair, I have to balance competing interests. The residents of the neighborhood have one focused, what you believe is compelling interest in no. Like I said, I've not heard anything that has said, let's try to make this better, this is how we make it better, we just don't want it here. And I've sat through three of the four public hearings, hearing that with nothing to substantiate anything that says we're willing to work with the developer. In fact, the developer has told me that what's happened is, is they've tried to talk to people, and people have told them, we have nothing else to talk about. So, yeah. But I do have to represent competing interests. Yes, I represent you, but I also represent 116,950 other people in this city. I have to balance the property rights of the owner, the rights of other business owners in that do business in the city, basically West Jordan business owners, and I have to balance the wants and desires of 116,000 other people. Here's where I'm, and so I have to balance those competing interests. Right now, we are in a housing crisis. Will these get built in time to solve the housing crisis? I don't know. But what I can tell you is, I am not painting a target on West Jordan City's back. What I can tell you is, the legislature is looking at cities and the way that we rezone. Let me interject. I was talking about this over the weekend with another council member from another city, and he said, well, just vote it no and let them get what they want, because it'll be worse when they get, when it comes back. I said, no, I can't do that. I am not going to vote no, no, and vote this project down, knowing that the legislature is watching and looking for excuses to take away local zoning control. Does that put us in a little bit of fear of the legislature and take away a little bit of our local control? Maybe. But at least we have control here. What would happen if the legislature, and this is a distinct possibility based on the way that I've read commentary and editorials recently, what would you all do if the legislature said, buy right, eight units an acre there, and they could put, they could put almost 600 units on there? We're putting 318 units. Fifty-four of those are townhomes. Yes, I know you don't like the townhomes, but I want you to consider something. Fifty-four townhomes won't have ADUs in them. If you wanted this R18, 350, 330, how many units that would be more than the 318 that Peterson's proposing, and every one of those could have an ADU in it. You could have 600 units there, and I see people shaking their head, no, but there are developers in this valley right now that are selling homes and having people finish their basement specifically to have ADU so that they can get the rental revenue to pay for a finished and bigger house. That is occurring. So as an elected representative, so what I'm doing is, I'm getting in my car, and I'm driving about 40 blocks to the west here, and I'm getting in one of those Utah National Guard Blackhawks, and I'm going above about 200, 2,000 feet AGL, and I'm looking at the big picture. The big picture is, this is 75 acres and 1,260 acres, 1,300 acres of planned community. It's part of a planned community, it's part of one that everybody lives in, both north and south. Nobody's addressed the fact that Jones Ranch, just to the south, is authorized up to 10 units an acre. That's a whole lot more dense than the 4.2 that we're dealing with today. Again, I represent the entire city and the city's interests, and I have to balance the competing interests. The competing interests are, yes, I understand, and I've heard the sycamores. That's why I'm proposing three amendments to the MDP. I talked with council member, or texted with Councilmember Whitelock today, and I'm more than willing to help sponsor an RCA that we can look, meet with you guys and look to modify the MDP at a future point in time based on input, and if there's valid input, that we can work with the developer. I'll be glad to go to the developer and see what we can come up with. And I told her I would do that. So at this point, you can tell that I am a yes on this. And then when we make the motion, I would ask you to consider the three amendments to help clean up the MDP. Thank you.
Councilmember Shelton?
Councilmember Green had comprehensive comments and actually covered some of the things that I wanted to talk about. I want to talk about one specific item that Councilmember Green did bring up, but I'd like to just touch on it one more time. And that's something that I believe all of the council members are thinking about, but I won't speak for you. But I think we're all thinking about this, and that's something called buy-right zoning that is being considered by the state of, the Utah State Legislature. It's being pushed very hard by people, powerful people up on the Hill. And this zoning, or this law that they're proposing would take away the ability of cities to zone and to control what's built in their cities. The Copper Meadows development is being proposed at 4.2 units per acre. Yes, there are undesirable elements of high density in this proposal. I'm particularly not a fan of the cluster housing. I like it less than the townhomes even. But when we're considering all of the acreage that the open space that is built into this development, the density is actually lower than most neighborhoods in our city. And if the city council were to strike this proposal down, it would give legislators at the state level a very large arrow in their quiver for passing buy-right zoning. Buy-right zoning would give the developers the ability to place upwards of seven or eight units per acre anywhere they see fit without permission from the city. If we strike this proposal down, buy-right zoning will give you something worse than what is currently proposed. By passing it now, we lock in a lower density than what would likely come down the pipe in just a few months from the state of Utah. This is not, I repeat, this is not just unfounded fear-mongering, as some would like to call it. It is the present-day reality of where we live. It is the present day reality of where we live. The league of, the Utah League of Cities and Towns has fought and defeated this legislation as recently as this year. I was up there on the hill in the, uh, LPC Legislative Policy Committee with the Utah League of Cities and Towns. We fought against this. Uh, but it's coming back again in 2024, or sorry, 2025. Uh, I've already read news, news articles. You just, just search Deseret News, uh, by right zoning. The articles will pop right up on your phone. Okay? The League of Cities and Towns has fought and defeated this legislation. And I imagine it'll be passed, uh, next year, whether we approve this project or not. So there are so many things I really don't love about the Copper Meadows Development. And there are so many reasons that I do want to vote no. Uh, but out of a desire to do what is right for your neighborhood and what is right for our city, I will be voting yes today.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. Um, obviously this is a hard topic, not only for the council members up here tonight, as we have to make a decision, but also for those of you that attended tonight and aren't happy with some of the things you've heard or some of the things that you've talked about over the past year and a half. Um, the one concern I had tonight was someone talking about, you know, a lot of people didn't show up here tonight because it, we just keep pushing it. And so that's why I did not want to vote to postpone this again, because this has been talked about for over a year. Uh, there's been multiple public hearings about it. Uh, we've talked to the developer, we've talked to the citizens, we've heard it all. And obviously there's not a consensus between what the citizens want and the developer wants. And I don't think there ever will be, even if we postponed it two weeks, even if we postponed it until January or February. My biggest concern is just what, uh, councilmember Shelton just said is what the legislature can do if we say no tonight. Um, I'll give you an example, and we mentioned this in, in the last meeting and, uh, councilmember Green knows about as well, cause he lives near me. Uh, there's an area now that has 400 units of an apartment complex. That could have been less than 200 or probably 100 townhomes. Because the citizens didn't want townhomes in that area. And so i- in this sense, I've, I've looked at what the Petersons have done. I do feel that for the sycamores that they've gone over and above because all the nicer, more expensive homes are going to be near the sycamores. Um, and those homes are not going to be cheap homes. They're going to be in the 700 to 800,000 range or, or even more. I don't know. We'll see how that happens. So I do have a fear, uh, I have younger children, I have children in college that won't be able to buy $800,000 homes or a million dollar homes. They all, they do need to start at that lower, that lower level. And I'm not saying they're going to move out there. I'm not saying my children will buy these homes, but other people will. Other people want to buy affordable homes. And this is an opportunity for West Jordan to have those there. I know it's not going to be in the greatest area for those of you that live out there. But I still struggle today to think if we say no tonight, it could be worse. And that's my fear. So we'll go from there. Thank you.
Councilmember Bedore.
So yeah, this is a very hard thing. And I will tell you that, uh, actually before councilmember Green was talking to Jeff on the phone, I was in Jeff's office Thursday morning after the meeting. And in fact, before Jeff was there, I, I got there before him because I happened to work downtown a couple of blocks away and thought, well, I need to go see. My question to him at the time was, do you think there's a way that we can all get together and talk? Cause I didn't know how long this, uh, thing was going to be, how long, uh, this postponement was going to be. But I wanted to see what possibilities were there. Plus I had given my phone number out to some of the people of the residents. Uh, I would say it's, it's interesting. None of those, uh, people called me. Uh, Nate, I know you, you texted me today, but I did talk to several people from the residents who then, uh, either called me directly or sent me a, uh, an email and asked me to call them. And I talked to them. But, uh, to go back to talking with Peterson, here's one thing I, I kind of learned and I, and I, and I don't say this to vilify Peterson in any way. But if there was this meeting tomorrow, and this is what I really need you to keep in mind, this meeting was nothing but going to be false hope on this. And I, I, I may get some pushback. Peterson wasn't going to be at that meeting. And if they came to that meeting, they weren't going to bring an eraser to the meeting. They might've listened, but they wanted a vote, yes or no. They've done work on this and that's what they want. They just want a yes or no vote. And if it got voted yes, they'll move forward. If it gets voted no, they'll scrap, they'll wait till what the other council members have talked about is going to happen. And they'd come back with a new plan. I'm, I'm putting words in their mouth. This is the feeling that I got. Peterson would rather have this be a yes because this is a better presentation for them. I don't believe that giving a, a false hope of something would have mattered. Let me, let me mention something. When I ran for city council, I, I ran much like when councilmember Whitlock said, because someone didn't vote the way they liked. That was one of the reasons why I ran. People didn't vote the way I liked. And so I started running and I ran very, very hard because I felt I really had to win this. But I need everyone who voted for, for me to know, and I've been very honest with people, you don't own me because you voted for me. People who funded my campaign don't own me because they put $50 into my campaign or more. People don't own me because of that. I heard the phrase, you work for us. That is true. I work for you. What I've realized, being a council member, is that I'm doing the job that most of the people don't want to do. And that is have to take the time to research all sides of every issue and come up with my decision. And I have to decide what is going to be the best decision. I could make it very easy and just keep voting what is going to make the constituents happy at that moment. But it's the same thing as letting my kids have ice cream. They're going to be happy when I give them the ice cream. But is that what's best for the, you know, what's best for them? So I have to research everything. And every vote I make, even on these little ones we've heard, I have read everything. Our, uh, council director, Mr. Anderson, knows I call him all the time asking questions because I'm new at this and I want to get it right. Because I have to vote. The only thing that owns my vote is my conscience and the constitution. Nothing else votes, nothing else owns my vote. And that's a hard thing to have to tell people. I had to vote on a rezoning in my district 50 yards from my house. And a few people there didn't like it, but it was the best thing for the city. I actually had a council member on this dais say that they agreed it's the best thing for the city. But two people came and talked that night and so they voted against it. I'm here to do what's best for the city. To echo what councilmember Green said, I don't want a target on this city. I do not want a target on this city. And if we give you the ice cream today that you think you want, it could mean that the next area gets hit harder. And that may be okay for you. But it's not okay for me. I have researched this as much as I possibly can. That meant I listened to all of you. It meant that I talked with the Peterson group. It meant that I talked to our planners. It meant that I talked to everyone I could. And my vote is going to come from that. And I know it's not going to make some of you happy. But that's the hard thing and why we take this job. And why in a few years, if people don't like the conscience, conscience, that conscience that I had in my votes, they can do what I did and run and vote me out. But because you say that I serve you, doesn't mean you own me. And that goes with all of us. And that's the point I want to make. I think this has been fair. I know you didn't like that it came up so quick, but we wanted seven people to vote on it. And two weeks from now, we won't have seven. And in two weeks, Peterson's not going to change their mind. You're not going to change your mind. So there is no difference in doing it now and doing it in two weeks. And again, I don't say that to vilify Peterson. I think they have worked very hard and they've answered all my questions. And they've answered even more from councilmember Green, who put a lot of work into this, as have most of this council. That is all I have to say.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Thank you. Much of what you've heard, I agree with. We are a political subdivision of the state and they give us our bumpers in our game. And they tell us what we can do and what we can't do. And they have been very hyper focused on, on development and density for several years. Prior to that, they were really focused on education. So I seem to join the, the team they're focused on. So they're right and it could. And with those currently in office and leadership, probably will occur. Um, but that doesn't mean that you're necessarily going to get something better or worse. I too have studied and I would say, I would counter that would Petersons maybe be willing to change? Well, right here, within the same 10 days, it appears they were willing to, to work on a few things with councilmember Green. And so I, I don't believe that we couldn't meet together and work together on some, some of the issues. And I just want to tell Petersons that I really appreciate, um, the meetings they have had. I, in my, in my opinion, the way we conduct meetings is not conducive to win wins. Because we have a developer that graciously sometimes, um, does a neighborhood meeting. But it's like the teacher lecturing the students. And then we give an opportunity to the residents to come and tell us how they feel. But we missed the part in the middle where what I feel and what I read last night online was that our job is then to work with the development team to address some of the resident concerns and to see if we can get somewhere closer to the middle, to where both sides are probably not going to be totally happy, but they're going to be happier. And that's my goal and that was my goal. And that's why I set up a meeting, because we had a postponement. I, I have some concerns and I've already shared those, so I'm not going to rehash them about the development. There were others on the council that felt there were some concerns that they wanted to look into. Some of that's been addressed tonight. So my vote because of these things is going to be a no. Do I think 4.2 units per acre is probably the density that, that will, would be good out there? Probably because we do have a, a economy that is not supporting larger lots and larger homes currently. And I don't know if it ever will go back to that. Real estate does ebb and flow and goes up and down, but unless there's a major crash, which I hope none of us have to experience, I don't see that happening. So I appreciate the Petersons. I appreciate the time that Jeff spent on the phone with me a couple of different times. And that's what I have to share. Thank you.
We're out of lights. Would anybody else like to speak or have them?
Lights still.
Uh, no, she didn't indicate a desire to speak. She texted me. She's, she's ready to vote though. If somebody wants to make a motion.
Sorry, I'm in a work function. I can't really talk very well, but I appreciate all the hard work and the, all the hours of conversation. So I, but anyways, a little, little thing, I, I can't talk much. I'm at work, but yes, it's been a long time coming. So thank you everyone on all sides.
Councilmember Bloom. Thank you. Councilmember Green.
I'm going to, uh, we have to do these as separate votes. So I'm going to move to approve ordinance number 2447, uh, master development agreement plan for Copper Meadows, 76 point, approximately 76 acres at 8,200 South and Stossley, incorporating amendments one, two, and three that were handed out to the council.
Yeah, it's a motion by councilmember Green.
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Shelton. So a discussion to the motion, as if we haven't discussed it. All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
No.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
I show the motion passes six to one.
Councilmember Green.
I will move to approve ordinance number 24 dash 48, approving the zoning and general plan, amending the general plan land use map for Copper Meadows to low density residential and a rezone to the planned community zone.
Second.
Okay, motion by councilmember Green, seconded by councilmember Shelton. Discussion to this motion. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Whitlock.
No.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
I show the motion passes six to one.
Thank you very much, council. Next item on the agenda is business item 7B. Ordinance 24 dash 52, amending the West Jordan City Code, section 115, 4G, regarding failure to file campaign finance reports. Mr. Anderson, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, this should be fairly quickly. Um, there was a discussion by the recorder's office, who is also our elections officer at the request of, uh, council in a work session to amend, uh, election code for campaign finance reports. That one was adopted, but there was a request by the body that it should be for two election cycles. So if you look in the red line on 115, 4G, you'll see that the word two, T W O, was added and election became plural with the addition of an S. So basically what this would do is if a candidate who is more than 30 day calendar days late in filing a campaign finance report or reports with the city recorder, uh, they are not qualified to file a declaration of candidacy with the city recorder for the next two municipal elections. So it'd be, for example, um, this coming year's at large election. So they would be prohibited from the at large, well, that's a bad example. If they're, if they're running and they don't file, they can't run for the next election or the following elections, two elections.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or further clarification? This was brought forward by councilmembers Green and Shelton. So if you want to speak to this, go ahead. Councilmember Shelton.
I'll speak to it briefly. In, in looking at this, when we originally passed this code, it just said that the next election. And I, I thought to myself, there's no teeth in that because what was intended was the, the next election being four years from now. But in truth, the next municipal election is only two years away. And, uh, so the intent I felt was, uh, was failing. And so we wanted to bring this back and, and look at it again. And we found that the, uh, the resolution to fix that with the intent of what was originally intended was to make it the next two municipal election cycles. Um, and then, and I'd also like to just acknowledge, uh, Mayor Burton is opposed to this. I consider him a good friend and And then I'd also like to just acknowledge Mayor Burton is opposed to this. I consider him a good friend and I I want to just tell him that I wouldn't allow this, my feelings on this versus his to to come between me and him and his great leadership in our city. We just happen to disagree on this one little thing, right? So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair. In bringing this back, I just want to let the council know I'll be voting no on this tonight. Not because I think it's wrong or not because I think it's bad. I just, I'm okay with what we've already passed. You know, there's, there's kind of a thought that, you know, if you don't turn this in right now, if you don't turn it in, there's no penance, you know? It's just like, well, I can just wait until the next election and turn it in. So I liked having the one election. And I think that's fine. I I get where you're coming from because some are going for District One or District Four. And then four years later, they can run again and there's no penance there. But I think four years is plenty of time. So I will be voting no tonight, just because I think the one that we already passed is sufficient enough for what I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this?
I think I'd like to just reiterate what I said last time. And again, knowing that the the mayor's not for this and and he and he did say that, you know, that he understands where we're coming at. But I also, we had, you know, one of the citizens, Rob Bennett, talked about and echoed kind of something I said earlier. If you can't follow the rules, you shouldn't be making the rules. And that is strong with me. That is very strong with me. What we do up here, we have to be transparent at all times. And that is a a huge, huge thing that if not done right, isn't transparent. The mayor said that there are many other things that we need to to look at as well, like people who put signs in wrong places and things like that. That is true. We do need to to work on that. And we're fixing these things little by little. We took care of making sure people aren't using the city logo. Now we're taking care of this. We're trying to get things as transparent as possible. But to say no to one thing because we haven't gotten to everything doesn't work for me. If we have to say yes to everything, one thing at a time, that's how we'll do it. And that's how we'll take care of this. Because transparency in this is very important. And I do agree with Councilmember Shelton, and I I think Councilmember Whitelock was in on this as well, that it should be four years. And that is because, again, if someone ran against me in District Two, didn't do stuff, didn't file their stuff, but then could run against me again four years later, proving that they didn't follow the rules the first time, I can't expect that they'll follow the rules the second time as well. So something needs to be put in position for that.
Any further discussions or motions? This is the business items. Councilmember Whitelock.
The mayor's lights on. Do you want to recognize him?
Sure. Mayor Burton, go ahead.
I I appreciate the comments that were made on my behalf. I just want to clarify that I'm not opposed to them having to follow the rules or a penalty being fixed. I just felt that this penalty is stronger than what should be for the case. So but I do believe that they should follow the rules, especially those who are making the rules. So I I agree with all the comments. I just felt the penalty was stronger than necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. I am in favor and I would like to motion to approve ordinance number 2452, amending the West Jordan City Code, section 1 dash 15 dash 4G regarding failure to file campaign finance reports.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Whitelock, seconded by Councilmember Shelton. Any discussion to the motion? My my thought, I'm just going to chime in really quick on the on the motion to approve. I could go either way on this. I'm not convinced that it's the best solution, but I'm not convinced that it's wrong either. I am, I'm grateful there's a 30 day grace period in in this section of code. If there wasn't a 30 day grace period, I would probably not be in favor. So that said, any further discussion? Councilmember Whitelock.
The reason I feel this is important is because I do think it's important that our constituents are able to go online or request from City Hall and see where our money came from. Running a campaign is not cheap, as we all know. And we get donations, but I think it's fair that we know where the donations come from. And if you don't file, then the residents can't see where your campaign funds came from. And that's important to me.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Vice Chair Lamb.
No.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
I show the motion passes five to one.
Pamela has logged off. Pamela left the meeting at, hang on, I'll tell you exactly. Pamela left the meeting at, Councilmember Bloom logged off at 8:11. So for the minutes. All right, next item on the agenda is 7C, Resolution 24 dash 041, amending council policies and procedures. And we're going to Mr. Hallmark on this one.
Thank you, Chair. This resolution, as you mentioned, looks to amend city council policies and procedures, commonly called council rules. And as you're aware, council rules consist of the rules regulating the business of the council and the conduct of its members, staff, and committees. If you were to open the red line in the packet, you would see quite a bit of red, as one of the primary things we did was revise the formatting. Naming an organization of contents was revised as to avoid conflict with city code. Specifically, we moved on from titles and sections and are going with simple rules. Some additional adjustments were as a a result of the council adopting the new chair, vice chair, leadership rotation, which you would see reflected in, let's see, on page 18, with the new specification of of the chair and vice chair rotation. Some additional things I would like to highlight is, under public comment on page nine, deleting the rule allowing the chair to permit a group representative up to five minutes of speaking time. This was done after discussion with various council members and in an effort to have equal time for any resident and also promote additional residents to address the council. Another highlight is with the adjustment to Tuesday night meetings, the specification of agenda publication, we removed Thursday and simply said seven days prior, the agenda would be would be published seven days prior to a council meeting. You'll notice the new appendices, the meeting agenda style guide, the leadership council rotation, and the item workflows, which have all been attached to the packet. And it's worth noting that we anticipate a policy-centered discussion around the rules coming to a committee of the whole meeting early next year. But for now, this is some some updates we would like to get in place with the specific adoption of the updated leadership rotation, which you recently adopt, excuse me, recently adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff or discussion? Councilmember Whitelock.
I I just want to put it out there that I don't want to remove the chair's ability to allow five minutes for a group. We've had more than one neighborhood that have come with traffic concerns. And they just basically have a spokesman come and sometimes they have a, I think it's our form that they have several residents that have signed their form saying we want a traffic study. They're usually asking for speed bumps, but I I don't want to take that ability away from the chair. It's still the chair's discretion to look out at the audience and see. So I'm okay with the other changes, but if that can't be removed, then I will probably be a no.
We see how well chair's discretion goes over sometime when they're perceived as limiting somebody's time and speaking at things. That doesn't usually go over too well. I will just mention that that item was brought up because oftentimes we have somebody who will come and say, I'm speaking for a group. I want the extra time. And then everybody else in that group gets up too. And the theory is, if you're speaking for a group, you're speaking on behalf, you're the spokesperson, everybody agrees with what you're saying, you get time to express everybody's opinion. That's why you get more time. That's the theory. It's it's hard to say, okay, you're speaking for, we had this happen in our last meeting. Somebody got up and said, or maybe it was the one before that, but said, I'm speaking on behalf of the whole Sycamores neighborhood. Can I get the five minutes? And then the whole Sycamores neighborhood got up and spoke. Not the whole neighborhood, but lots of you. So if they all said they were speaking on behalf of their neighborhood, that would have been five minutes each. So that's that's the theory behind that anyway. Just putting that out there. Any further discussion or motions or questions? Councilmember Green.
See, that's, we we've seen that happen where somebody, somebody says, and that somebody says, I'm representing a group. And then somebody, that that group, the people do get up and speak too. I would be okay. And maybe this is something we can, after we pass this, sitting here thinking about this, I would be okay if the person that said, I'm representing the group and here are the specific people I'm representing. And they signed it and said, yes, they can represent me in front of city council to speak the five minutes. I'd be okay if they did that and handed it to the chair. And then we knew that those people who signed that don't get a chance, you know, they've they've given up their right to to talk. Otherwise, otherwise, yeah, the the extra couple of minutes is just turned into, yeah, never mind. I'm not going there.
Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you, Chair. In regards to that, three minutes versus five minutes, I'll be honest, to me, erroneously giving a resident an extra two minutes that they shouldn't have received is a small sacrifice for me to make in order for the residents to feel like they've been heard. So I would agree with Councilmember Whitelock that that if we, if we could make that change, I will vote yes. But otherwise, I I feel like maybe I I need to vote no on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. The longest I've sat here for any one item was an hour and a half. We do not typically draw a huge crowd to our chambers to speak. And I just am not for limiting. And I just don't want to limit resident input. I want people to feel like they can come and talk to us. Because we are their representatives. So it may seem like a small thing, and I get that sometimes everything is sometimes abused. That just happens. We're humans. And advantage gets taken, but I'd rather err on the side of giving the time than taking it away. I'd rather listen for two more minutes and then listen to five more people speak on the same thing than to make someone feel limited. Thank you.
Councilmember Bedore.
I'm going to agree with the sentiments of Councilmember Whitelock and Councilmember Shelton on this. I've been on this council for a year. I think it's been abused once. So I've lost two minutes of my time from that.
You'll never get that back.
I know. There's a lot of other things that have taken a lot more time. But I'm for that. I don't think it's happened. And I do think that the chair can make, if it's starting to get out of hand, can tell people we did have this happen. You know, we we agreed to this and now it's starting to be abused. And I'm okay with that, even if it's that. I didn't mind the hour and a half we spent two weeks ago because people need to, people need to say that what they need to say. And I'm okay with that. So I would be in favor of also keeping the five minutes.
Any further discussion or motions?
I'll attempt the mo- a motion. I move to approve Resolution number 24 dash 041, amending city council policies and procedures. With the exception of deleting the five minutes for a group, that will remain in at the chair's discretion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Whitelock, seconded by Councilmember Shelton. Discussion to the motion.
Can I have five minutes?
You may have as much time as you want.
As they say in the NBA, two minutes. You're at the two minute warning.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
It's the two minute timeout in the NFL.
Or college.
No. All right, so no further discussion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent items. Councilmember Lamb.
Move to approve consent items. I knew you were going to do that.
Motion by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Green. There's no resolution here, so all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Rule that motion passes unanimously. We have a closed meeting on the agenda. I don't have the purpose on my notes right here. Mr. Lee.
Discussion of real property acquisition.
Okay, we'll take a motion to go to closed session.
I'll I'll move to approve, or move to convene in a closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to that motion. Seeing none, let's roll call vote this one.
Who seconded that? Sorry. Thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Thank you. I show the motion passes six to zero.
Okay, we'll convene in a closed session in the conference room in two or three minutes.
Counsel, for those that are still online, we're going to leave this meeting running with a blank slide while you move to the workroom for the closed session. Then you'll come back here to adjourn. Then you'll come back here to adjourn.
with various staff. I'll take one final motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Well, that motion passes unanimously. We have a closed meeting on the agenda. I don't have the purpose on my notes right here. Mr. Lee?
Discussion of real property acquisition.
Okay. We'll take a motion to go to closed session.
I'll move to approve, or move to convene in a closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to that motion. Seeing none, let's roll call vote this one.
Who seconded that? Sorry. Thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Thank you. Our show the motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Little convening in closed session in the conference room in two or three minutes.
Counsel, for those that are still online, we're gonna leave this meeting running with a blank slide while you move to the workroom for the closed session. Then you'll come back here to adjourn.
with various staff. I'll take one final motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. All in favor say aye. We're adjourned.